I'd like to call the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education meeting for July 20th to order. Trustee Van Gimmer, are you going to take attendance?
Um, excuse me.
It's okay.
All board members are present with the exception of trustee Fala.
Thank you. We can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to move on to item number two, administrative appointment. Administrative appointment of Dr. Daniel Hartley, the principal of Bloomfield Hills High School. We have Todd Ridleck, our assistant superintendent of learning services.
Yes, thank you. And good evening, members of the Board of Education. It is my pleasure to introduce you to Dr. Dan Hartley, our new Bloomfield Hills High School principal. As I'm sure you will agree, the hiring of a principal is a significant responsibility. Our principals lead our school buildings by shaping culture, being an advocate for students, guiding and supporting staff, and building community. After an extensive interview process, we are pleased to announce that Dr. Hartley will be joining our team. With over 20 years of experience, Dr. Hartley has a proven track record in educational leadership and successfully leading schools. Dr. Hartley comes to us, to Bloomfield Hills Schools, from the Gross Point Public School System, where he most recently has been serving as director of secondary instruction. Prior to that, he has also served as a high school teacher and department chair for Goodrich Area Schools, a middle school assistant principal, and then an elementary principal for Dearborn Public Schools. He has also served as a middle school principal in Gross Point, and then he became the director of secondary instruction for Fraser Public Schools before returning to Gross Point, as previously stated, as the director of secondary curriculum, instruction, and assessment. Dr. Hartley graduated from University of Michigan twice, first with a bachelor's of arts in education at U of M in Ann Arbor, and again with a master's of public administration in educational leadership at U of M in Flint. Dr. Hartley continued on by earning both an educational specialist degree and a doctorate degree in organizational leadership and education from Oakland University. He joins us here this evening with his wife Sarah and his two sons Jacob and Henry. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Dan Hartley, principal of Bloomfield Hills High School.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you on behalf of my family here today. Just want to thank the board for this outstanding opportunity. Thank the members of the community that served on the hiring committees, the students, the staff, the community members, the administrators. I'm just really honored to be here and thrilled to take on this opportunity and challenge. I've had a long career, 21 years in public education, and really feel like what I can bring in terms of building relationships, bringing a lens of equity, and really, you know, being a leader that I think this community needs at this time. And like I said, I'm up for the challenge and just really excited to be part of the Bloomfield Hills community. And go Blackhawks.
All right, definitely.
I think we can dispatch this, but I move the Board of Education appoint Dr. Daniel Hartley as the principal of Bloomfield Hills Schools, when effective date of August 1st, 2023.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, and is there any discussion?
You have a vote?
I'm very excited, and go Blue.
Go Blue.
Go Grizzlies.
Go Grizzlies.
Then go Blue.
Sarah's a Spartan, so, you know, we balance.
All right, we've evened out. No discussion.
All right. Any other comments you want to make? We're good? All right, well, welcome.
Wait, we need to vote.
You threw me off when you started talking.
All right, so it's been properly moved and seconded. We'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
There is 6-0. Thank you. Congratulations. Now, congratulations.
Picture.
Yep. All right, we'll take a very brief intermission. We'll be right back after the photo. Thank you.
One more day.
Can you get a snack?
Okay, so, welcome back.
That's a good day for the kid. For ours, yeah. Do I get candy?
I'm so excited for Thanksgiving.
Oh. Bye.
This is really cute.
That's cute.
See, this is all good news. All good news.
So, do I need to go back on or do you just call the meeting back to order? You don't have to go through the whole thing, just call the meeting back to order.
All right, we'd like to call the meeting back to order. Moving on to item number three, public comment. Is there any public comment?
No.
Seeing no public comment, we'll move on to item number four, board business. Selection Committee, selection of the superintendent candidate finalist. We have with us John Severi. Is there, let's have a conversation now.
Sorry?
Are we having, I'm passing the conversation over to you, John.
Well, we discussed extensively last night how we plan to approach this this evening, so I don't know. I could certainly review that if you'd like, but otherwise, just answer any questions or any clarification they may be looking for at this point.
Okay. And I did follow trustee, I was about to say Kumar, Colen's suggestion, and I do have numbers, so if you'd like to draw, I'll pass it this way.
So who's, was it names or?
Just numbers.
Oh, sorry. And then you would go in.
That was a good suggestion.
Nope, nope, this way. Did you take two numbers?
I took two. I misjudged.
You opened both of them?
I didn't open this, I didn't open the second one. And trust me, the first one is probably the one I don't want to have.
Mine's blank. This is for Tarek.
Okay, so this is our order of conversation as we state if there is someone that we'd like to put forward or not. Who has number one?
I have number one.
Who has number two?
I do.
And our number three? Oh, me. Number four?
I do have number five.
Five?
I have five.
And then Carolyn has six. So we'll start with trustee Colen.
Okay, first, I want to thank all the candidates in going through the process, applying. It's a long process and going through interview, getting 21 questions on spur of the moment. It's very, very difficult. I had a chance to read the feedback. Thank you for the community putting the feedback in a portal. I had a chance to go through the feedback, and then I had a chance to reflect, read everyone's 90-day plan, and evaluate the interview process. Right now, there were various things I liked about all the candidates, but there are various things I had reservations about through all the candidates. So at this time, I think regardless of how much time it takes, and I know going through this process is long, I'm willing to go through this process again for our community. At this time, I don't have any candidates. I would like to move forward to the next round. I'd like to see more resumes, more applications throughout the process right now.
Trustee Hill?
Thank you. I will echo Paul's comment about thanking the candidates who came. That was a very rigorous interview to have to sit through for all that time, and I admire each and every single one of them for the poise that they had in answering all those questions. Similarly, we had been, when we talked about the timing of this, we had talked about this being a difficult time of year to harvest resumes, and I would like to, I don't want to rush. Right now, it feels like a rushed decision to try and advance. And I recognize that tonight, we're not making a selection, we're making a selection on advancing someone. If I was to select any candidates tonight, in theory, if there were two, they would be interviewed next week, and there would be tours during the day and whatnot. Something doesn't sit right with me that they would be having this extensive day at Bloomfield Hills Schools when Bloomfield Hills Schools are empty. I think that would be a more meaningful procedure, process to go through when the schools are back open. And I think that we have had community feedback, and we've had emails, we've had people enter the QR code, I've had people I know personally reach out to me and give feedback. I've spoken with one other board member who took the time to, excuse me, call references. So there's been extensive due diligence that I think the board has done on each of these candidates. And with all that in mind, for me, it's not a, I don't want to advance any of them to the second round. It's, I would like to see a greater pool of resumes and candidates and review those prior to making a decision on who goes to the second round. So I just think that advancing someone next week would not be a fruitful exercise. I don't think that we're getting the full engagement from the community on this process currently, and our teachers and staff, because it's the end of July, and everyone's in summer mode. And I think that we'll get more feedback from them come fall. A big part of my decision hinges on the fact that we have, I have the utmost confidence in our interim superintendent. I think he is the person who needs to be bridging the gap between summer and transitions, and he needs to be the person who's in charge when our kids go back to school, and I feel a lot of comfort having him in that role. That is going to be a hard ask for the most experienced candidate, and so I just think that he's the person who's appropriate to bridge that gap for us and allow us to not rush to any decisions and allow us to take more time to look for more candidates. So I will stop rambling and indicate that I am not voting to push any candidates forward tonight, but that's not a long-term no on any of them.
Thank you, trustee Hill. I'm next, and so I also would like to thank all the candidates for taking the time out to meet with us through an extensive interviewing process, and at this time, I think that there are candidates that rose to the top for me, and I would like to extend my vote for a second-round interview, given that the start date and other things are determined by the Board of Education, and there are things that are definitely under our control as relates to those types of parameters. And the person I'd like to put forward is Dr. Roy Bishop Jr.
Okay, and then number four is trustee Kumar.
Thank you, trustee Southward. I am frankly torn hearing from trustee Colen and trustee Hill. I was willing to put forth a couple of candidates for tonight. I do agree with trustee Hill that having the second round when school is not in session is probably not a great idea. I'm definitely open to moving the second round to a later point, but I still would like to go ahead and nominate the candidates I had in mind, and happy to debate, you know, when that second round's going to be. So I'd like to nominate Dr. Ernesto Matias and Dr. Roy Bishop. I felt they best fit the profile, having come from outside the district, and felt they would be able to take on and challenge the status quo. Thank you.
Thank you. So next, we have trustee Van Gimmer.
I guess first, again, thank you to all the candidates for taking the time to come here, put yourself out there for this position. I tend to agree with trustee Hill that this is not the ideal time for a second interview, but I also agree with trustee Kumar that leaving all five individuals hanging is maybe not the right way to do this. Not saying that it's the wrong way either. I took the time to create a rubric. I evaluated the candidates based on their credentials, their experience, the interview comments and opinions of the community and people that reached out to me directly, their recommendations that the candidates submitted, et cetera, et cetera. I spoke with several of the candidates' references today, and as expected, they were all supportive, but some were effusive and very specific in their praise. These are candidates with advantages that can also be considered disadvantages, and vice versa, and there are candidates whose weaknesses can be considered strengths and vice versa. With that said, and trying to honor this process, I too would like to put forth Dr. Matias and Dr. Bishop.
All right, well, since I'm last, I get to express what I have thought over the course of these interviews, and like all of you, I read the community feedback for each candidate, did my due diligence, read their 90-day plan and all their references that they included in their documentation. And, you know, I was reflecting on why I ran for a school board as well, and what I cared deeply about, which is some of the things, respect, inclusion, open information, open-mindedness. I care about students that struggle and are not being supported to achieve their greatest potential. I'm looking for a candidate that can work on some of those things, and Bloomfield should always strive to be better. A true leader will acknowledge our strengths, but also acknowledge our shortcomings and work to get to our ideal spot using those ideals going forward. And that's why I looked at every candidate thinking what would be best for our district as a whole, and there were many considerations, but in the end, I believe that Carol Diglio would be a good candidate. I vote for her. She's been at Novi in Oak Park as assistant superintendent of HR. She has 34 years in education. I enjoyed hearing that clear is kind and that people should be held accountable in a kind manner. She, there are many other reasons why I think we should move forward with her, but the other candidate that I also believe would be a good fit for Bloomfield Hills is Ernesto Matias. Why would he be good? In my opinion, he would improve the culture of our school district. He respects outdoor learning and holistic views of education. His excellent communication skills and persuasiveness is something that our district needs. His leadership ability impressed me, and he has a background in multiple states, Montana, Indiana, Illinois. I think that he had a lot of good qualities that could improve our, our community. I also was very impressed with Dr. Roy Bishop as well, so I'm going to place a third candidate for me as my top three. We are able to put forward more than two, and he had qualities I also found intriguing. He worked with multiple people in Gross Point, the CFO, the superintendent. I think he has the experience and the education we're looking for, and it would be great to have him move forward as well.
Okay, so at this point, John, did you want to?
So I tallied the responses of board members. There were four members of the board who spoke in favor of advancing Roy Bishop, three for Ernesto Matias, one for Carol Diglio, and two members of the board who indicated they would prefer not to advance any candidate at this time.
So if one is getting advanced, then we're going to second round next week with at least one, correct?
Depending on the motion that's put on the table and the result of the vote. If the vote is to advance one candidate, the next discussion could be, that's what's scheduled. If you folks would want to have discussion about the timing, we certainly could do that, but as of now, that would be the case.
Okay, because if we're going to advance, if we are going to advance next week and we're not going to open up for more resumes, then I'm going to vote for an additional candidate so that we're not just second-round interviewing one.
I was actually going to, I actually did like Ernesto, and I would be willing to add Ernesto as a second-round candidate for my, for my vote. For reasons that I did feel that there were some similarities and likeness to his background in his previous role and his leadership styles could definitely be something that we could benefit from.
All right, so that would indicate that there may be support to advance Roy Bishop and Ernesto Matias to the second round of the process.
Yeah, that's four and four for each, correct?
Yes.
All right. So then we're set.
But if you want to add, then you may add.
No, I was going to, I was going to add Mr. Matias as well. Yeah.
All right.
Again, I don't feel comfortable second-round interviewing next week when schools are empty. I would like, and I would like to see more resumes, too. I feel like this process is rushed. I understand not wanting to, as I had said originally, it's not a no against any of these candidates, it just feels rushed, and it feels like doing it when school's not in session. And even though those are the candidates, I don't, I do think that our interim is the appropriate person to bridge the gap between summer and the start of school, for sure. So therefore, I don't see the rush for the second-round interviews, and in the interim, while we're waiting, I would like to see more resumes, so that as to not delay the process, if we were not to have a conclusion by the time the second-round interviews are done, at least we already have the process started of starting to gather more so that we have more options to look at. I don't want to get to the end and we don't have a candidate to appoint, and then we have to start from scratch in the resume search again.
Yeah, I think maybe we could figure out how we can do maybe a better, maybe a more robust job at connecting with our community to participate in the summer. I think having that gap for learning, right, may be a little bit easier for a person when it's not in the very thick of things come fall, as opposed to there possibly being a conversation to have some overlap with our current interim and our possible, if we get to that point, new superintendent. I think that might be a great transition between now and then as an opportunity, just my thoughts.
So I agree with Megan, and it's for this reason, once, when school begins, you're going to have staff back in the buildings, kids back in the buildings, and I think what we as a board look for is feedback from those people, and when we're looking for that feedback, I think we got an average of 10 comments per person on the QR code. So to me, that's not enough feedback. It's not a large enough sample size to have legitimate feedback as to whether or not we like these candidates, and that's kind of, in some ways, I agree to allow all the candidates, you know, to remain, I mean, obviously, we're at risk of losing them to something else, right? If we pause this for any length of time, and that's something that we have to consider, but 10 comments isn't enough for me to make a judgment on, like, based, you know, to really, like, figure out whether or not the community likes this person or not. And that's why I agree, I think we should, or not that we should, but like, I think it should be considered that we move this to when school starts, knowing the risks of losing the candidates so that our community can have sufficient input on who these individuals, you know, who we move forward. And that said, it's just a second interview. It could be none of these individuals, like, at the end of the day, but we won't have any input from anyone else. It doesn't, no one is engaged in this process right now. I mean, there are, when I say no one, I mean, there's not very many people.
There are people.
To your point, and that, I mean, those are excellent points. There'll be more people engaged once school starts, buildings are open. Part of the process, which we can do this time around, is have the prospective second-round candidates visit the schools, interact, board members concede the interactions. I'm not sure how many people next week will show up from a student perspective, probably not many, from a community perspective, probably not many, and a staff perspective, a lot of people are traveling, probably not many, and we do want that feedback as well. So, yeah, if...
This is a, this is the most important thing we do.
Yep, I agree.
And so far, I feel it's been, we've needed to move quick, but just the timing lining up with knowing there could, we could have more candidates to review, to be able to bring to the table, it just, we're not getting nearly the staff feedback. You know, staff's on vacation, and they might know what's going on, but they're not, they're not engaged, and I would like to hear more from them as well.
I think I would be okay with supporting, like, waiting, but I'm not necessarily sure if I would want our current candidates that we invested time in to now be placed on hold as we look at more resumes, to have another first-round interview to add to our second-round interview.
Can I interject on that point, please?
Yes.
I think you'd have to go one way or the other, very honestly. I think if you decide that you want to advance candidates now, but that you want to delay the second interviews, you can do that. I do agree, there's some risk that a candidate may decide not to wait, I mean, so be it, but just know that. But to expect that we would repost with two people advanced as finalists and expect others to apply in that situation, honestly, I think is, it's not realistic. I don't believe you would attract, we just did a robust search and heavy recruitment. To think that we would go back out with two finalists and say, would you like to throw your hat in the ring now? I just don't believe it's practical. I think certainly if you get to the point where you decide that you have yet to find the right person, and you need to continue the search, at that point, we would want to discuss what our options are in terms of how to go back out, when to go back out, and then we would go ahead and move forward from there, but I don't think you can do both at once. I think it's either choose two, decide on the timing of when you're going to interview those folks, make a decision on those two, and go from there.
But then we've lost how much time that we could continue to, it doesn't even have to be active, we just let people know that the posting is still open, that we're still accepting more resumes, and...
We're all employees. Would you want to apply to a job and then be told, we're reposting it again, your application is on hold, and we're taking in more applications?
Absolutely. That's the way, yeah, that's the way the real world works, that we have a lot of, I think there's a lot, we missed out on a big pool of people who would have applied but for the timing or other circumstances. And I think if we wait for the second round, and then we start the process again, I just think it's, we've lost time. But that's okay, because I'm comfortable with the interim that we have in place. I feel confident in his ability to lead us through this, but we're just losing more time at that time.
How much time do you think we're going to lose?
Well, the objective was that we wait for the second rounds until we're back in school, right? So that's early September.
Correct. So our original second round is going to be next week.
Right.
Instead, that's going to be moved to, let's say, early September.
So by the time we do the second round in early September, and then ultimately reach a decision, if the ultimate decision is not to move either of those forward, we're estimating mid-September to late September, that then we would be starting again, but again, we're not...
But we just mentioned that we've got a robust interim superintendent in place, and we're confident in his abilities.
And he is only with us until October 30th.
Honestly, I think we're more likely to alienate candidates than encourage candidates if we post at the same time we're advancing finalists, from my experience.
I mean, I'm personally okay with going forward, because that's what we're voted in to do, is make a hard decision here. We're not here, we are here to take feedback, but in the end, we listen to our own gut and what's right for us. That's why we all have these positions here.
I don't, I mean, again, the feedback, going back to a couple of years ago to today, and to looking at what we got so far, like, 10, I mean, we got 10 comments or whatever, very limited comments. I would say one thirtieth minimum of what I saw a couple of years ago, and that's a combination of people are away, it's a bad time. We need to gather that feedback. This is the biggest decision we're going to make, but it's the biggest decision that we want. If we're going to, if we're going to say we're going to go out, I just campaigned, we're going to be transparent, we want feedback from the community. Doing it at this time is not being transparent when half or three-quarters of our community
Doing it at this time is not being transparent when half or three-quarters of our community and staff and students are away and can't give adequate feedback. And they're not going to be around during the most crucial time, which is next week, to provide their final feedback.
I don't, I don't think we're being, we're not being transparent. I think we're being very open and honest with the process. I think we're being very open and honest with how things we believe should go. I think that there is, there's nothing that we're hiding or shielding from the community. So I don't think that there's a lack of transparency in anything that we've done from the start of this process. Now, is it the best time? Is it the ideal time? It's never probably an ideal time to hire a superintendent, right? It's probably never an ideal time to lose a valuable member of, of your team where you've got a sense of process. I'm totally willing to, to vote to support, to delay an interview, but I think it sends a, a bad message to those we send forward to say, we're going to open up the pool for additional folks because we want to consider other people and, but we've, we've already considered you as an option. So I, I just, I just, I don't know if I could.
Well, I guess that's just why my, my vote in the beginning was to not advance anyone and to just, and let them know that they were still in the running, but we wanted to see more resumes, more resumes. But, so that's why I voted the way I did, to avoid that.
And my vote was, I didn't see in any of the five candidates. I mean, this is not disparaging, I just don't see any of them at this point as a right fit in getting to the original, I'm not going to pass someone on that I can't see. So that's why I'd welcome more resumes as well. So, and if we want to give, if I want to get more feedback in September on the two, on the two candidates from our community, all of our stakeholders, you know, that I gather.
I guess I'm torn to understand, if you don't see it in them today, what would change your mind three weeks from now in regards to extending, or three months from now with changing the process? So, or extending the, the option for, for more interviews or more resumes, should I say?
I'm not saying, that's, that's not what I said. I said, I didn't want to move any candidates forward. So I'm sticking with that. So I want to see more resumes because the candidates I interviewed, I don't think would be a right fit. So that's mine. I didn't, I didn't say extend resumes.
So, so from what I'm hearing you say is that you would like for the process to not move forward, is not seeing, because there's a difference. Seeing more resumes is not moving the process forward with more resumes. What you're, from what I'm hearing you say is, you would like for us to start over with the search.
Correct.
That's a different process.
Correct.
So that's, I think we want to make sure that that message is what we're communicating and not that you want to see more resumes and keep people on hold. That's a difference. There is a great difference in that.
So, for me, it's not just about the feedback, it's being able to observe the candidates in that space when there's people around. When there's people at the buildings, when there's more people even here, you know, like, when, when there's more staff in this building, you know, I want to, they're supposed, like, the, the plan is for them to come on Monday or Tuesday, whoever, you know, is selected, and to be around, like, the community, be in the buildings, but what's going to be there? Nothing. So if I go and I, I go with them, I'm not going to see them interacting and see how, how they handle themselves, I'm not going to see that. And so in addition to the community feedback, I feel like I'm missing that part of, like, potentially who they are, right? So that's where I, like, that's, that's my reason. And I'm not going to say anything else, like, I'd be happy to, to do it next week, too, but I, I would prefer to, to have that observation, I guess.
So Michelle, just to answer your question, and I think you understand, for me, I don't see any candidates, I don't want to move forward, but, and I'll be outvoted, but I support, even though I disagree, that if you want to at least have the community, you know, if, if some of our colleagues want to move forward, these two candidates, and have more of the community feedback, that's, again, it's still different than me saying I want to start the process over, starting tomorrow. So I do agree that if you are going to move forward, whether I agree or disagree, that you should have it in September versus next week for the sake of our community. But yes, in, in my opinion right now, I think the process should start over tomorrow.
And I think that's important to note. Thank you.
Well, I'm just thinking about the start of school. If we pushed it back, for instance, the start of school is kind of chaotic, would, would anyone even be interacting with these folks coming to, you know, the high school when they're rushing around, thinking about first days of school and that type of thing? I don't know if they would be able to really focus on the candidates, although I guess they could.
People to focus on the candidate, I need to see how the candidate reacts to the people, like, there's a difference, you know, so.
I mean, I would say to that, it would be a, it's a relatively brief interaction. I don't know that it would be in terms of the hustle and bustle of the opening of school, the candidates kind of in and out of the buildings, brief interactions.
It doesn't have to be the first day of school.
It was actually, it was actually, it was actually like about an hour. I actually attended, I think it was about an hour, I attended the last superintendent when they were in the, they went to the high school. And it was, we were in one of the open spaces and it was not a presentation-esque, but there was like a, a talk of some sorts and we got to interact with that person. I think it was maybe about 30 minutes to an hour, if I remember.
Just, you know, reflecting back.
But there weren't very many people there.
Reflecting back, because I rode, I was with both finalists when we went to all the different buildings. And it was, that, that whole day was powerful with people being around. So, you know, I'll just focus on Superintendent Watson, interacting in the buildings, five minutes each building stop, and then coming back. Everyone was back, so that, that, we had the teacher forum in the high school that was packed. We had the community forum packed. We had the student forum. It was, it was, again, well-attended. And we got, again, overwhelming feedback, which we're not going to get next week. And then, you know, obviously, the second piece of it, we could see how it works out pending, you know, on the two candidates, one's, one's out of state, you know, one's obviously, you know, here, but at that point, you know, we'll see that. But I think that day, in terms of interacting with people around, is, was powerful versus what next week would be, which would be pretty much not much.
I did attend and it was, I would say that it, there was value added.
Yeah.
So I don't disagree that we could wait until fall, because there, there was, as a community member at the time and parent, it was nice to see both the candidates in, in the building for interaction, for conversation.
And not just get the feedback from the staff and students.
I don't know if it would matter.
But also hear their observations about our schools and they're able to observe certain things going on and give us, there, it'd be interesting to hear what they have to say and what their perspective is on what they're observing. If the continuing to leave the, the resumes open is, is an option, is, is a problem, I understand. I'm not going to continue to push for that, you know where my position is. The stronger thing I would like to push for is that the second round occurs when school's open.
Thank you, trustee Hill.
So we'd have to, in essence, figure out a calendar.
We have to make a, we have to make a motion.
Well, I mean, I'm, well, in essence, I'm just trying to recap what we would have to do. So in essence, we have to figure out what best time this would occur in the fall. So I guess I would want to know, that's not something we can decide tonight.
I mean, in theory, we can. I mean.
I mean, I would, don't, I mean, I would want trustee.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, okay. So we can talk about it on a later date.
Yeah, we can make it as part of the motion. You know, obviously, the second round will be delayed until, you know, further discussion.
Are you writing this down so you can make the motion? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I probably, I probably shouldn't make the motion, because I'm not going to vote for the motion, because, you know, my position is to not move forward, so. I'm not going to make a motion that I'm going to vote no for.
That's, that's. I completely understand. Seva's writing down what to say. All right. And John.
So while we're waiting, waiting on that, so I would hope that for our, our next time together, for our next meeting, we need to carve out time for everyone to bring their calendars so we can decide on a, a date for the second round interviews for the fall. And in the meantime, one of the things that we'll have to wait to hear back from John after he reaches out to the candidates tonight, to see who would like to accept the pause in our time, should the motion pass tonight.
I'm going to, I think you can assume, leaving tonight's meeting, that both of the candidates would accept and, and come back in the fall. And, but I will absolutely, obviously, if that's not the case and that's problematic for anyone, I will let you know that immediately.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Let me read a draft of the motion. I'd like to make a motion to advance Dr. Roy Bishop and Ernesto Matias to a second round interview, to be held at a date to be determined candidly in early September.
Seconded?
Rebecca, did you get that?
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion.
I was just going to add, you got, you all convinced me that this sounds like the best method to really get to know these candidates, so I appreciate everyone's input and hearing it tonight. So thank you.
I totally agree with the, support the move to September. And, and we do have the option, if, if the board's still uncomfortable at that point, if, if candidates don't meet the board's expectation to not extend an offer to those candidates.
Yeah, 100%. Any other discussion?
Every time I go to stop, I want to, I want to make sure.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. So we'll call for a vote, all those in favor. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
And we have 5-1. Motion carries.
Okay.
We'll figure out the dates as soon as possible, probably the week of the 4th, probably the week of the 11th, actually. It's not, it's not the very first week of school.
Ideally, the 11th, 12th, or 13th before our 14th study session.
So those, what you're, everyone can go back and check?
But we can talk about it.
We're meeting the 27th.
So for next week, we had the candidate interviews scheduled for the July 25th and 26th. Please note that we will not be holding candidate interviews for next week on those dates here. So please be sure that you do not show up for candidate interviews for second round on next week, on July 25th and 26th. Please look out for additional communication from our district with possible dates for September and invitation.
I'll look ahead. I don't need to be here when you have the discussion, but I'll look ahead in my calendar and I'll let you know if there are any of those dates within the first several weeks of September when I'm not available, just so you can take that into account.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments?
Sit right. I'm trying. German?
No.
Okay. We'd like to move to a German.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, all.